Friday, 5th, I want to welcome everybody to this morning's committee meeting. We're starting a little earlier because there are a bunch of people here that have a lot to say, so I want to try to accommodate as many people as I can. We're gonna have, we do not, I'm joined by Mr. Ed Reyes right now. We do not have a quorum, but we will start every action taken prior to us. Having a quorum will be deemed to communicate from the chair. It is my understanding that we do have an overflow room. There may be a hiccup or two with the translation equipment over there. There may be a distance problem and we don't know how it's gonna transmit to room. Alan, what room, 1050 is it?
When's your inquiry, yes?
Yeah, 1050. So we'll move forward and do the very best that we can. Generally, I tell people that to please turn off or turn down your cell phones and I will do that again today, but I want to put you all on notice that any second I'm expecting to be a grandfather for the second time, and if I get that call, I'm gone. So I just, I just, if you see me running, that's the reason. We've just been joined by Councilmember Perry, so we do have a quorum. We will start off with, there are about four items that I think that we can move on the consent calendar, so... I would think, Ms. Sauer, we could begin by reading items 1 through 4.
Okay. CRA and CAO reports relative to an acquisition loan agreement with SRO Housing Corporation in an amount not to exceed $5 million for the Roseland Hotel located at 112 West 5th Street in the city center redevelopment project area.
Okay, on item 1, we'll adopt the CAO report. Read item 2.
CRA report and CLA 2 report relative to the acceptance of a $240,000 renew grant from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health and related contracts to implement a community market conversion program with the Council District 9 corridor south of the Santa Monica Freeway Recovery Redevelopment Project area.
Okay, that was a bad, I've been a bad chair. We're gonna continue that item. I just made you read it just to get your heart going this morning. Item 3.
Item 3, CRA and CLA reports and resolutions relative to amending the pre-development to permanent loan agreement with Clifford Beers Housing, Inc. to increase the amount from 1.5 million to an amount not to exceed $3 million for development of the 28th Street YMCA located at 1006 East 28th Street as affordable housing within the CD9 RPA.
Okay, on item 3, we'll adopt the CLA report. Receive and file the CRA report dated March 18th. Item 4.
CRA and CAO reports relative to the renewal and award of annual contracts and purchase orders totaling approximately $8.7 million for various goods and services for fiscal year 2010-11.
Okay, on item 4, we'll adopt the CAO report. So without objection, these items will be deemed approved, and that brings us to item 5.
Motion, Alarcon, Weezer, Rosendahl, relative to suspending for one year the 3% floor for rental increases allowed by the city's rent stabilization ordinance freezing rents at their current levels.
Okay, we have a lot of public comic cards, so at this point, Mr. Clerk, I want to officially cut off, you know, any more of the, we'll try to deal with the 8,000 that I have now. 8,001, and they will speak for one minute, and we will begin with, I think, Mr. Gross, Larry Gross, we'll begin with you.
Good morning.
Good mor, how much time left?
One minute.
Okay, Larry Gross, Coalition for Economic Survival. This rent freeze is a common sense action. We need it because you're not ready to deal with long-term RSO changes. But it's clear that a 3% rent increase starting July 1st is not justified in any way. The freeze is just a timeout to enable you to develop long-term changes. Given the CPI was a negative .62% last year, there's absolutely no justification for a 3% increase. Increases in other rent-controlled cities that have not been that high, in fact, if you look at those cities, West Hollywood had rent increases of zero for this year. San Francisco's .1%, Oakland is .7%, Berkeley is .1%. None of these cities have seen buildings crumble, Armageddon come down, locust swarm, or owners abandoned or forced to sell their apartments because of the limited increases. If we didn't have a floor like these other cities, our rent increase for this year would be zero, so we urge you to pass this moratorium. It's just and it's needed. Thank you.
Okay, 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 okay. I thought I heard there was locusts in San Francisco. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong. I'm gonna ask, like I said, we've got a full plate today, so let's save the applause. I generally don't do that, but if we do that, then we'll have more of an opportunity to have people speak. We've just been joined by Richard Alarcon. Next, I want Rachel Torres, Betsy Handler, and Ann Williams, please come forward.
Good morning, my name's Rachel Torres, I'm a resident and renter in the city of Los Angeles and a research analyst for Unite Here Local 11. On behalf of Unite Here Local 11, a union that represents over 20,000 members, we strongly support Councilmember Alarcon's motion calling for a one-year moratorium on all annual rent increases on apartments subject to the rent stabilization ordinance. We believe that this policy is a just and fair response to the current economic crisis. It allows the city council to decide on the recommendations without burdening tenants with additional unjust rent increase while they deliberate. We recognize that this council has a strong track record of respecting the concerns of working families through the implementation of living wages and support for strong union contracts. Despite all of our collective best efforts, our members have suffered from opportunistic employers who wish to practice race to the bottom policies. Now, as we engage in our ongoing contract fights throughout the city, these companies have proposed cutting many of our hard-earned rights such as a living wage, job security, affordable healthcare, and sustainable workloads. Okay, so we support the moratorium, thank you.
Thank you, Betsy, then Ann.
Good morning, I'm Betsy Handler, I'm the Director of Legal Services at Inner City Law Center. We also support the moratorium. As you are aware, the Economic Roundtable Study commissioned by the Housing Department shows that 58% of Los Angeles renters are rent burdened. They pay 30% or more of their income for rent. 31% pay over 50% of their income for rent. A June 09 Roundtable Study showed that a single parent with two kids in Los Angeles needs over $49,000 a year to provide the necessities of life, including housing. A two-parent family needs over $54,000 a year in income. Our clients cannot afford that, they cannot afford a 3% rent increase. Surrounding jurisdictions do not have locusts, notwithstanding Councilmember Wesson's reports, and please, please pass this bill for the tenants.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Ann Williams from the Central City Association. We represent 450 businesses employing over 350,000 people, and we oppose the moratorium. I want to urge you to consider the practical effects of a rent freeze on rental properties across Los Angeles. We're all aware that LA's unemployment rate is over 12%, but the unemployment rate in the devastated construction industry is at least twice that rate. When property owners are confident about having a consistent and sufficient cash flow from a property, they hire painters, landscapers, roofers, and other members of the Los Angeles construction industry workforce. These are all local jobs. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Michael Millman, Lena Rangel, and Richard Close.
Good morning, my name is Michael Millman, M.I.L.L.M.N. I've got apartments both in Santa Monica and in Los Angeles, and I've been through the great rent wars in Santa Monica, and I'd never want my loving city where I was born, Los Angeles, to become anything close to Santa Monica. Let's tell the truth, there are four things we should remember. One, political suicide Jack Weiss. My friend Jack Weiss betrayed his district, betrayed his neighbors, betrayed his community by not being sensitive, and when it was time, he collapsed. You're gonna have plumbers, electricians, you're gonna have landscape people, everybody in your district that earns from these small apartment owners, these mama and papas, they're gonna fracture and collapse. You're destroying them if you don't consider at least the 3%, and I'm opposed to any moratorium. Think about the people that stood shoulder to shoulder to elect you. They're, they're not gonna wear orange shirts, they're gonna be there for you, thank you.
Hola, buenos dias, este, mi nombre es Linda Rangel. Yo vengo de la organización Inquilinos Unidos. Vengo representando en el edificio donde vivo, 46 familias.
Richard, can you help me out? Or some, well, here we go, Steve's gonna do it.
Me llamo Linda Rangel. Vengo en, de la agrupación Inquilinos Unidos.
My name is Linda Rangel, and I'm here as part of United Tenants.
Vengo en representación de, de 46 familias que viven en, en el edificio donde yo vivo.
I'm here representing 46 families that live in the building that I live in.
Es un edificio que tiene más de 100 años, este, tenemos el basement inundado.
It's a building that's over 100 years old, and the basement is flooded.
Estamos invadidos de chinches, cucarachas, ratas.
We're full of bedbugs, roaches, and rats.
Gusanos.
Worms.
El dueño no nos quiere arreglar nada, entonces, este, nosotros estamos pidiendo que se nos congele la renta porque habemos, este, algunas personas ya enfermas. Este, yo tuve una operación en diciembre pasado.
So, so the owner doesn't wanna fix nothing or make any repairs, we're asking that you freeze our rents.
Y se me rompieron unas pitas de mi apartamento abajo, entonces, yo agarré una infección, estuve internada por ocho días en el hospital.
Because of a pipe bursting in my unit, I got, I got sick and was hospitalized for a time period in the hospital, so thank you.
Espero que manden a alguien para que, este, vean las condiciones que estamos viviendo, muchas gracias.
I expect that you send someone to see how the conditions we're living, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Close.
Yes, Richard Close from the law firm of Gilchrist and Rutter. I'm here to discuss mobile home parks, in particular, as covered by this rent control ordinance. In the last 18 months, there've been two federal cases, the San Rafael case and the Guggenheim case, that have held rent control as to mobile home parks creates a transfer of wealth between the landlord and the tenant owner of the coach. In both cases, the courts have ordered damages to be paid by the city of Los Angeles. The issue has not come up throughout the state because under the state law, statute of limitations apply. Unless there is a change in the ordinance, mobile home park owners are not allowed to file a lawsuit against the city as a result of these two federal cases. If the city makes this change in the law as it pertains to mobile home parks, mobile home park owners would be, have the right to file a lawsuit for damages under the San Rafael case and under the Guggenheim case. We ask you to leave the ordinance alone, at least as to mobile home park owners. Thank you very much.
Mr. City Attorney, when we get the department people here, I do want to make sure I don't have a senior moment and forget that, I do want to ask the attorneys for housing about the mobile home park.
Yes, sir.
Terry Silva, Brandon DeHart, Susie Forbath. Terry, you're first.
Good morning, gentlemen, my name's Terry Silva, representing Warner Pines Apartments and Property Management Associates. The truth is that this is only going to affect 10 to 20% of my residents. They've been there five to 32 years, their rents will go up only $30 to $45. This will affect my bottom line severely, however, they're paying already $300 below market rent. So with the increase, they're still gonna be paying $250 to $260 below market rent. In the last four years, I've had a 25% increase in utilities, 10% increase in taxes, I am held to continuing to lease to them at these severely below-market rents, and I think that in this economic environment, we want to continue to keep up the property and to hire other small businesses to keep up the property, and I think you should vote against freezing that rent increases. It's the fair and fiscally responsible thing to do.
Thank you. Brandon.
My name is Brandon DeHart, and I'm a member of the Coalition for Economic Survival. I live in your district.
Yeah, you do. Believe it or not, that's one of the first streets that I lived on when I moved to Los Anjos.
Oh, on Norton?
Right by, by, by Olympic.
By Olympic. Yep. Um, my, my building was built in 1927, and we were also infested with bedbugs and cockroaches. We have, we have joined together to try and push our landlord to do something about it, but he, but he doesn't wanna listen to us. If, if you, if you allow them to increase our rents 3%, I mean, they're already not taking care of it as it is. What makes you think that they're gonna take care of it, you know? If, if, I mean, their complaint is that the people are gonna lose jobs, well, I mean, they're, they're, they aren't hiring people as it is to take care of the building, so, I mean, that's, that argument doesn't make sense. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Believe it or not, as an aside, the, I stayed in a back, it was like a little back house, and I didn't know, it was a converted garage, and I didn't know it was an illegal structure until I went to try to get the heat turned on, so.
And they're like, where are you living?
That was a long time ago, but I'll never forget it. 1000 block of Norton. Sucker just ripped me out. Susie.
Hi, I'm Susie Forbath with the law firm of Gilchrist and Rutter. We represent a coalition of mobile home park owners in the city. There are over 60 parks in the city providing more than 8,000 affordable housing units to the city. Mobile home parks, unlike other forms of rental housing, do not automatically get vacancy turnover, they don't get to go to market. They only get to go 10% to market upon a vacancy, which means that every time that there is a vacancy in the city, the rents are still grossly undermarket. Mobile home park residents tend to live in their homes for 20 to 30 years, and so the rents are 20 to 30 years behind what they are, should be today at market rates. So the 3% increase allowed from mobile home park owners is just barely inching them up toward anything they should be to be able to maintain their parks, not, so that they don't turn, these apartments are sounding like they're turning.
Thank you. Michael Farinick, Veronica Dolma, Phyllis Doherty.
Good morning, sir, my name is Michael Farinick from the Apartment Association. I just please urge you to look at the ramifications that we're going to have due to this moratorium. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I did tell you that obviously you gentlemen have helped pass DWP increases and other increases, and the ramifications weren't looked at when, when this was done. So if this moratorium is put into place, I, we own probably about 1,000 units as far as rent control is concerned, and we will let go of more maintenance people, more leasing people, more people that do our landscaping and work. If, you know, we're in this business for a fair return, and without this increase, we will not get a fair return. So please, I urge you to look at, look at the ramifications that are, that are going to happen as, for this action. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Veronica Dolman, and I'm a member of LA CAN. I am here in support of the rent freeze. We want to make sure to put a stop to the 3% rent increase and the 2% for utilities. I am a disabled veteran, and my pension have not been cut yet, I mean, not yet, but SSI have been cut two and three times. Services have been cut. Disabled people can't afford to pay for caregivers or any other services, so you know that they cannot function with a rent increase. Think of the less fortunate who can't afford this rent increase. Have a heart and keep this rent freeze. The overflow room is 90% tenants. We want someone to acknowledge the tenants that's in the overflow room. I have some papers that I would like to submit to the council.
Okay, you can do it with the clerk, thank you. Phyllis.
Hi, Phyllis Doherty, I'm gonna speak only for myself, I'm a small property owner. I have two units that are rented, I've managed to get rid of everything else. We had four units in our home because it was, it's an R4 and it was originally for rentals. They are vacant and they will stay vacant because I cannot afford nor can I take the risk to rent them. No other small businesses being penalized in this way. If Councilman Alarcon's wife needs to raise her rates a little bit on her business, I'm sure she can do it. We can't, you cannot stop small businesses and say that they cannot function. We are not responsible for bedbugs and cockroaches and so forth, we take care of our properties. We cannot afford to do the upkeep on them. I'm going to drop the catastrophic insurance that I've been carrying that would have provided homes for my tenants should something happen at the building, and I'm gonna tell you when they can become vacant this time, they will stay vacant because I can make more money doing the write-off and not having to pay for everything than I can renting them out. So I beg you not to do this to us, we love our tenants, I take wonderful care of them, and we would like to stay here.
Thank you.
Yes, you know, my, my family is not exempt from this lousy economy, and for what it's worth, my wife had to reduce her workforce by 20%, so that, that is not the issue here. All of us are suffering in this, in this economy. The question is, where are we gonna put the burden the most?
I just had to say that.
Okay, Tara Bannister, Robert Gray, Linda Hollenbeck. Welcome back.
Good morning, Councilmembers, my name is Tara Bannister. I live and work here in Los Angeles, but I now work for the National Apartment Association, and I'm here to speak against the freeze on the rents. Two reasons.
Wait, is everything all right? Okay.
Uh, one is, first of all, I'd like to point out, I actually live in a rent-controlled unit here in Los Angeles, and my rent rate is a lot higher than most other people's, and some of us could afford a rent increase. It is not, it's very different amongst high-income tenants compared to low-income tenants. Secondly, having worked in government for 10 years for the governor of California, I can tell you there's a lot of bureaucratic issues you're probably gonna have to face. These rent increases need a 30-days' notice. We are now getting upon the time where it'd be very difficult to actually communicate with the tenants from the landlord perspective. The second part that I want to point out is the expense that the city is going to actually have to incur to communicate with all the landlords and the tenants as well in the next few weeks once this is decided. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Robert, I think.
My name is Robert James Gray, and I'm a downtown resident and a member of LA CAN. I came to downtown because I could no longer afford to live where I was because my SSI check is being cut by 15%. This income cut is not because of debt, but is pure theft. No written notification or reason has been given to me. This was just not enough to pay rent, buy food, and get the necessities to survive. I'm not homeless, but I am in transitional housing program, which is only for one year. What will I do then if this moratorium does not get approved? If there had already been a moratorium, I could have handled the unjustified income cut without an added rent increase. I cannot stay in transitional housing forever, but I will still not be able to afford permanent stable housing. Please, you must pass this one-year moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hollenbeck.
Thank you, my name's Linda Hollenbeck, I'm an attorney, I represent landlords, I also serve on the executive board of the California Apartment Association, Los Angeles. I'm here to talk about a portion of my clients that you may not have considered, and these are some of my clients that are not, have buildings that are not subject to the rent control ordinance. The reason they are not is they are exempt because they operate under regulatory agreements. We obtained exemptions, and to obtain that exemption so that they could serve the lowest of the low, those on Section 8 senior properties tax credit, is to get the exemption, they agreed to only raise their rents according to the rent control rates. So when a moratorium goes to rent, through the RSO, there's no 3%, these clients also are not able to raise their rents at all, and they are already so far below market, serving the lowest of the low, trying to rehab buildings, take something that was not a very nice place to live and make it as, as nice as possible. For those people who might otherwise be homeless, they are now gonna be put into a position that they cannot do the things that they had planned to do, and we urge you not to pass this moratorium.
Thank you. Thank all of you. Khan Varnishung, Pam Walls, Mark Wagner.
Good morning, my name is Khan Varnishung. I am a property manager at a community called Rancho Los Feliz in Los Feliz, and I've been doing this for about 10 years, and I've really seen it tough. I had to let go of a staff member, you know, our operating costs are going up, our market rates are down and very low. I really urge you guys to really look at this because we like to do projects and we like to do things, but right now, it's just really tough for us, so I urge you to vote no.
Thank you. Ms. Wells.
Ms. Walls.
Walls, I'm sorry.
Good morning, um, my name is Pam Walls, I'm a proud member of LA CAN. I strongly support ending the 3% increase because I was homeless for over five long years, struggling and hoping to find a place, just a place to live. Now that I have an apartment, I don't want to live in fear of losing it just to go back on Skid Row. Please don't send me back to the missions, and please don't send me back to the shelters. I remember sleeping outside in the rain, getting pneumonia, going in and out of emergency rooms. That was horrific. I'm barely making it now, so I urge you to vote yes today. I urge you to vote yes because of the fact that this will make my life easier and many people living in Los Angeles' lives easier. I want to live, I want to thrive, just like anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Ahhh.
Thank you.
Mr. Wagner.
There's always one in class.
There's always one. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Mark Wagner, and I've been in the business for over 20 years, and I manage about 770 units of rent control. And look, there are responsible landlords, and there are not responsible landlords. I've heard stories in here of landlords not taking care of their properties, responsible landlords do, and we, I have, I have never seen economic times this, this bad for us. Revenues are down, we have fixed expenses that always go up, taxes, utilities, trash, carpeting, that, that always go up. We have reduced staff, we have reduced vendor work, and it takes real money to operate a property and fix- tightening, and less jobs, less vendor work for us. That is just the bottom line.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes will take over for a moment. I want to go to the overflow room for a second.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following three please come to the microphones. We have Janie Lazo, James Bethard, I believe it's Dr. James Bethard, and then Maximus Fernando. Please come on up. Good morning, folks. Ms. Lazo, just give us your name and address for the record.
Good morning. My name is Janie Lazo, and I am a property manager in Northridge. I'm responsible for management of 258 rent control units. I've been in property management for about 11 years now, and the past 18 months have been the most challenging time of my career. I strive to provide quality, affordable housing for my residents, and I am very proud to do that. I am also a single mother. I have three children and my 88-year-old ailing mother living with me, and I am the sole provider for them. The economic times have caused myself personally to see a loss of about several thousand dollars in income over the past year. It's made it very difficult for me to meet the rising expenses of my own household. For my workers, we have downsized in the past year. We are spread more thin than ever. We have severed ties with vendors that we can no longer afford to keep on board, and that is affecting the vendors and their families and their ability to sustain their families.
Can you have your address? We didn't get that.
Yes, I'm sorry. It's at 17171 Roscoe Boulevard.
Thank you for taking the time. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Maximus Fernando. I'm a painting and HVAC contractor. I provide services exclusive to property owners and property management companies. I have about 30 employees right now. Their scales wage from $10 to $45 an hour. My concern is that moratorium to rent increase would pass, the property owners would force to tighten up their budgets so severely, they would probably slash first contractors' works. That would force me probably not only to not to hire any more employees, I probably would have to let some of my employees go and slash their pay scale as well. I strongly urge all of you to consider voting no to this matter.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Dr. James Bethard, District 9, 210 West 7th Street. I strongly support Councilman Alacron. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I too am a new grandfather for the 13th time. I represent the DAV, the American Disabilities Act, and most of all, the Coalition of Economic Survival. And we strongly support the moratorium on the rent control, not because it is a financial and economic disaster all around, but because it gives a breathing space to both sides. We have on one side a decrease from the Fed, all the way down to, that trickles down to the municipality for the common person. On the other side, we have people that are beset upon by an economic strife which has gone across the water to the handsank and to the European euro. What we're looking at right now, ladies and gentlemen, is 1929 all over again, and I beseech you, please, stand behind Councilman Alacron. Vote for him. Do what is right for the American people in the second-largest city of the United States. Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thank you, Mr. Reyes. In fact, there's so many people here, I think they are opening up another overflow room. So we already have Room 1050. I think they're opening up Room 1060 as well. So if Joe Thomas, Gustina Woods, Carlos Macara, please come forward. Mr. Thomas, you're first. Ms. Woods, and then Mr. Macara.
Good morning, councilmembers.
Good morning.
My name is Joe Thomas, and I'm a member of LA CAN. I'm also a disabled vet who has been through homelessness off and on for over the last 10 years. I have been forced to go through this because of the lack of affordable housing in the city of Los Angeles. One of the reasons that we don't have affordable housing is because the RSO guarantees landlords a minimum 3% increase and an additional 2% if the landlord pays utilities. This process is overinflated or rents and has created an imbalance between landlords and tenants. With our rents being overinflated, low vacancy rates, and social net programs being cut left and right, we also left with a budget shortfall. This is why I'm here today, to ask you to vote yes on the Alacron motion to freeze all rents and RSO properties in the city of Los Angeles for one year. This will give tenants a break and allow for true stabilization in housing in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Ms. Woods.
Hi, good morning. My name is Gustina Woods. I am currently employed with Able Building Maintenance.
No, it was a quick minute.
I'm like, it's not?
And that was a riveting, riveting presentation.
I was going for it.
Go on.
I'm currently employed with Able Building Maintenance. I've been apartment prep manager for over a year. I currently have a staff of 25. Prior to the harsh economy, it was a staff of 30. We've had to let go of some people. If you vote no, we would possibly keep these people, keep them employed, and possibly myself. So I'd hate for these people to lose their benefits and possibly their jobs. And me as a single mother, I could possibly be affected too. So please, vote no on this freeze.
Okay, thank you. The noisy LA Times. Carlos Macara.
Good morning, councilmembers. Honorable Mr. Weston. My name is Carlos Macara. We live in 8th 11th South Normandy. Our family has provided affordable housing for 30 years. We're a small mom-and-pop's outfit. We basically, we have eight units. We're responsible landlords. We have not increased our rents in three years. My mother and father worked very hard to have these property, this property. They're clean. Our tenants have been with us for 15 to 20 years. We've done everything to try to keep them happy. So please consider these ramifications. We're struggling. We're struggling every day. And I'm also a veteran. I'm also a person that pays our taxes. I'm also a single father. I brought my mother here. She's right there. My father and us, we're also Americans too. And I just think that you should do the right thing because we're barely making it. So please consider everything so it's fair for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Carlos. I haven't seen you since we had our joint committee hearings, and we had the first one at a church, and that's where I first met you, sir. But you're third. That was a while ago. So you're third up. So up now is Mary Haywood.
Okay, I'm a proud member of LA CAN, and I'm here to talk about the least innocent is the children involved here. I was a single, I went through the court system myself, and the only thing that this is going to do is bring more children into the system. I support the Alacron front, you know, rent, you know, keep it stable because there's a lot of single mothers and fathers that can't afford to do this. And I, the last time we went here, I saw a woman say that she was raising three children in a garage. Now, that is totally ludicrous in a country as big as this is, that a woman has to live like that, whether they're on welfare or not. It shouldn't be, and that's the way I really feel, because I've been on both sides of the coin. And luckily, I had a mother-in-law that took over my three children as a foster parent, and a lot of kids don't have that option. But I was blessed that way. And she's 76 years old, and she's done a hell of a job.
Boston, New York, and New Jersey.
New York.
Okay. Mr. Gray.
Yes, good morning. Thank you. I'm Scott Gray. I represent Capital Foresight. We own several rent-stabilized properties in Los Angeles, and we strongly oppose placing the moratorium on the rent increases for rent-stabilized tenants. While we understand the desire to help people, the reality is 2009 was an extremely difficult year for everyone. Our expenses continue to rise steadily and are asking our, and effective rents after adjusting for concessions, increasing free rent from one month to two months, giving away free TVs and free microwaves just to attract new tenants to our units, decreases the effective rent that we've been asking between $200 and $300 a month for both rent-stabilized tenants and market-rate tenants. More importantly, our long-term RSO tenants frequently pay 20% or more less than market rate. Bottom line is, if this ordinance is passed, we will immediately go to the county assessor and ask for a reduction of our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kwazi Nkuma. You haven't seen me for a while because my situation has changed. I'm no longer a tenant. I'm now a landlord.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm living in a home that my partner and I built to accommodate our retirement. I was lucky, lived in a rent-controlled unit for many years in Koreatown. But now, we have a rental unit below. We have two units in her old house that were part of the calculation of how we cover our mortgage for our retirement. But guess what? The market has changed. We had to drop the rents on all of those units by $200 to $400 per month per unit just because of the market conditions. If you own a rent-controlled unit, you're actually on prime property as a landlord. If you get a vacancy, you're going to fill it pretty quick because it's a renters market, and people will go to rent-controlled units. You know, and in the economic circumstances we're in, everybody's taking a hit. We get now these journals from the different real estate ownership entities, and on the front page of one of them was the advice to drop your rents because of the market conditions. So I don't see where the argument lies here.
Okay. Matt Anderson, Anna Isabel Gonzalez. Carlos, is your mother going to testify? Okay, so Ada? Don't you make her do this if she doesn't want to. Don't you dare. Don't you dare. But Ada, I'm going to just, if Ada spoke, I'm sure she would be supportive of her son's, Carlos's, position. So I'll give you that much, Carlos. Okay, Matt?
Good morning. I actually am a renter, an owner, investor, and actually a manager of property. So I wear many hats. And as a renter, I understand freezing rents would be great, but as an owner, it's really detrimental for us, and the rent freeze would basically handcuff our ability to reinvest in our communities. This is not just a financial or a bottom-line dollar number for us. We responsibly upgrade our communities. We reinvest those dollars using one- to five-year capital plans that will help the community, beautify the community. Like the back of this T-shirt says, we do want to provide affordable, decent, and safe communities for our residents. And we also believe that, you know, the communication problem that will be presented here, if we pass it immediately, we have only 30 days to do rent increases. July 1st is coming up very soon. We do not support the rent freeze. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Gonzalez?
I'm going to go ahead and first read it in Spanish and translate it for you in English so that those can understand. Me entristezca mirar mi gente, suplicarles y regarles. Me, me entristezca saber que hay una madre soltera cosiendo ropa bonita de su casa para que ustedes puedan ir de shopping al mall sabiendo que ella nunca podrá comprarle a sus hijos ropa bonita. Me indigna saber que el padre de seis niños trabaja 14 horas construyendo sus mansiones y sus condominios y él sabe que nunca podrá comprar una casa para sus hijos. Me indigna saber que esa madre soltera se acuesta a las 12 de la noche haciendo tamales, se levanta a las 5 de la mañana con su chiquillo a un lado por mientras que ustedes se duermen a las 12 de la noche en una cena elegante y se despiertan a las 5 de la mañana para hacer yoga. Me indigna saber de aquel joven que vino con un sueño americano y ahora pisa la cosecha de sol a sol con un sueldo miserable viviendo en una tienda de campaña al costado de una loma para que ustedes puedan ir a Whole Foods or Trader Joe's para comprar su comida orgánica sabiendo que esta comida está fuera del alcance de todos nosotros. Esta crisis económica seguirá creciendo siempre y cuando los dueños y los políticos sigan poniendo sus propios intereses sobre los intereses de todos los demás. It saddens me to see my people come and beg for you to pass this proposition. It saddens me to know that meanwhile, there's a single mother sewing beautiful clothes in her house so that you, the owners, can go shopping at the mall, knowing that she will never be able to buy this beautiful clothes for her children. It saddens me to know that there's a father with six kids who works 14 hours to construct your beautiful mansions and your condominiums, and he knows that he will never be able to buy a house for them. It saddens me to know of that single mother who goes to sleep at 12 at night making tamales so that she can go wake up at 5:00 in the morning and sell them with her kid along her side, knowing that you were in a fancy party until midnight and that you wake up at 5:00 in the morning to do yoga. It saddens me of that young boy who came here with an American dream, and now he is picking fruit from sun down to, from sun to sun, and he's slipping, he's sleeping in a tent up by a hill so that you can go to Whole Foods or Trader Joe's and buy your organic food, knowing that that food is just out of our reach. This economic crisis will continue until you, the owners and the politicians, put your self-interest, until you start putting your self-interest before the interest of everybody else.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Thomas DeBeau. I think this is Johnny Prado or Joni Prado. I think Johnny. And Kasha Wasiak.
Good morning. Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Thomas DeBeau. I'm the Housing Attorney of HIV and AIDS Legal Services. My clients are low-income people who have HIV and AIDS. Many of my clients are on SSI, and I'm sure all of you are aware that SSI is one of those cuts that disabled people are trying to survive with. Some of my clients are grandmothers. Some of my clients are mothers with dependent children. I know that you are quite aware that also in this economic situation, even those people who are able to work are getting their hours cut. I ask you to support Councilman Alacron's motion because what we're doing here is we're only asking to put a freeze on the rents so that we can do more further study, as you know, the CPI does not justify an increase of 3%. This motion will only freeze the rent so that you would have an opportunity to further study why we should raise the rent.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeau. Mr. Prado.
Good morning. I'm speaking for the apartment owners or landlord owners that only have small amount of units, four to six. A lot of older people own those units. They have to pay for, keep up their own units. So they have to pay somebody to come in and cut the grass, do the repairs and all that. They can't afford to have that. But one thing, I have a two, I own a four-unit place. I only charge $800 for a two-bedroom apartment in historic Filipino town, which is almost five minutes away from downtown. If we don't raise the rent, we're not going to be able to do the upkeeps that we need in an old unit that was built in the 1950s. So I think if we make an exception to small unit landlords, I think it will be better. Not a hardship like Mr. Alacron has said, make an exclusion of a small apartments and building owners.
So you own one four-unit place?
Right.
Thank you.
Hello.
Help me a little bit.
Hello, my name is Kasha Wasiak. I've been in the industry for about 10 years now, and I manage a building over 100 I've been in the industry for about 10 years now and I manage a building of 183 units in Los Angeles off of South Barrington Avenue. Our economy is doing so bad that last year we had to cut about two positions. And this freeze will only continue to, you know, leap towards cutting more positions, more vendor jobs. I guarantee you that we do take care of our buildings to our highest standard and we invest hundreds of thousands of dollars each year on projects to maintain these older buildings. So with the cost of the utilities going up and the higher vacancies due to the economy, we just, we cannot maintain that way and have this freeze on top of everything. So I do ask you to vote against this, please.
Thank you. Next, we have Cindy Chambers, Tony Remus, Anna Guzman. Uh-oh. So I messed up another name, huh? I'm going to let you set it straight when it's your time to speak. So we start with Ms. Chambers.
Okay, thank you. Hello. My name is Cindy Chambers. I'm a 15-year resident of Venice, newly elected to the Venice Neighborhood Council, a power member, and I'm also representing 50-plus people in the overflow room who agree with me in asking you to please support Councilmember Alarcon's motion to place this moratorium on rent increases. I'm here today to talk about, a little bit about my story. My story is no different than most, it's just more personal to me. After a successful career in corporate training and instructional design, I, like millions of others, lost my job in November 2008. Since that time, I've done all the things career specialists tell professionals to do during the recession, but my industry is just not recovering and jobs simply do not exist. Facing an uncertain future that includes losing my health insurance and no job prospects, my landlord of 15 years taped an envelope to my door recently announcing that he would be increasing my rate, my rent again. This increase would add an additional $1,200 per year to my rent. My landlord knows my situation. Thank you.
Finish your sentence.
My landlord knows my situation. In fact, a few months ago, he told me that living on unemployment must be a good life and basically easy streets for someone with single, who is single and with no children, which is completely different than his situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Tony Reyes. I'm employed by Able Building Maintenance. We provide services-
Wait, what'd you say, Reyes?
Reyes.
Okay.
We provide services such as landscaping, janitorial, and engineering for rent-controlled apartments in the Los Angeles area. The struggling economy and rising utility rates such as water and power has forced us to reduce my staff in my department from 44 employees to 33 employees in the last year and a half. The proposed rent freeze may result in more layoffs or benefit reductions to our existing employees. Myself, as a, as a renter in a rent stabilized apartment complex, I would rather pay the rent increase than to become unemployed. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Guzman?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Anna Guzman and I work for the Able Building Maintenance Company also. And I've been working for this company for the last 11 years and I supervise the Porters Department and I oversee IT employees. This economy has forced us to reduce our staff by leaving go some employees. Now with this freeze, it will hurt us even more because this will force us to reduce our staff again and our employees will not only lose their jobs, but their benefits will be lost too. I also live in Los Angeles in a rent-controlled apartment complex. I've been living there for five years and I have a great landlord, has always been there for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Come here, Ms. [inaudible].
Sure.
I won that one. Okay. Tania Latona? And is it a Chuck Betts? Estelle Tannenbaum?
He said fly.
No, no, I did not. I said Chuck Betts. Chuck Betts. Estelle Tannenbaum? Well, well, you're here. You go.
Councilmembers, thank you for your time. My name is Tania Latona. I work as a property manager for 275 units in Los Angeles between Mid-City and Miracle Mile. I urge you to vote no on the rent increase freeze. The economic situation has affected all renters and property owners and managers. We have decreased our staff. 3% will still not increase our revenue because that increase will actually go towards our expenses, which are utilities, which will be increasing this month also. We urge that, as myself, I take care and pride of providing quality living to my residents and I do have increased rents for those who have lost their jobs or have lost pay wages in order to keep them. We've lowered about $300 the past two years. 3% increase is not still going to cover the $300 we've lost per month.
Thank you. Mr. Betts?
Yes, Chuck Betts. I'd like to ask a question of the panel. What is this freeze based on? Is there, has there been a study done?
Yes, yes.
Is there something?
Yes. Almost a million bucks on a study.
What?
That came back and indicated that this should occur. Okay, so I'm just saying that's what it's based on, a study.
But it's not a freeze.
No, it's based, you asked a question, I'm giving you the answer. We did a study and the study came back with a series of recommendations. This was one of the recommendations. So complete your-
Okay. I've been in this business for over 40 years. I had a tenant that lived with me for 37 years and she continued after I sold the building for three more years and passed away in that building. Her rent was way, way below market rents. We don't raise people's rents that can't afford it unless we absolutely have to.
No, come on, just keep it down. Wait, hold, hold this time. Everybody that will be afforded an opportunity to speak and you get your full month, minute, regardless of what you say, we show respect and let him finish his statement because we will show you the same respect. Sorry about that, sir. Go right ahead.
In real estate, 5% vacancy factor is a break-even point in real estate. The vacancy factors right now are in double digits. I heard in some areas it's up to 13%. In addition to normal expenses, since I went into this business, there have been so many increases in our expenses due to rent control.
Keep going.
We can't, we cannot pass through all the capital improvements, which is the biggest cost that you have in the rental business. And if you can't pass them through, how are you going to do capital improvements and maintain the property? If you want the apartment buildings to fall apart, and they're going to, because the structural stuff is not being taken care of, it cannot be. There was an article just the other week in the Daily News that spoke about this, how the apartment buildings are falling into disrepair.
Thank you.
And when the big earthquake comes, who is going to pay to rebuild the apartments? Number one, with our income, we won't qualify for loans.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. How many units did you own or do you own?
Pardon?
How many units do you own?
I'm down to 10 now. I'm moving my money out of California. I don't want anything here anymore.
Okay. Ms. Tannenbaum?
My name is Estelle Tannenbaum. I'm 79 years old and I cannot believe that I'm down here after all these years again fighting for my property rights. I have not raised my rents in years, but I don't want a moratorium that will never go away hanging over my head. You people have to realize what's happening in this city. There's vacancy, vacancy, vacancy. I've had a gorgeous apartment that I've reduced $200 that's been on the market for seven months. I've reduced my tenants' rents. When they were out of work for the movie industry, I went into my line of credit so they could live there. I should have brought my tenants down here, not the ones that Larry Gross buses in year after year after year. I was going to come before the council to ask for a grant to keep my apartments going because I'm the one that's helping my tenants, not you or Larry Gross.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna let her get. This is, this is the first time, the first time that I saw someone get in Larry's face and he didn't say a word, so. That was priceless, okay? Scott Wright? Mr. or Mrs. Bick, I think it is, Orfer Bick? Barbara Schultz? Mr. Wright?
I'm Mr. Bick.
Well, we'll let you go because Mr. Wright's not here yet.
Okay. My name is Orfer Bick. I own a single six-unit rent-controlled apartment building in Valley Village, California. In 2006, I invested $300,000, my entire savings, into the small building, gutting and upgrading the building. Last month, one of my six, by the way, all the units are really pretty right now. Last month, one of my six units became vacant. This is a renters market and as a result, I dropped the rent by 10% and I'm offering one-month free rent and yet the unit is still vacant. I cannot raise rents anyways because the market will not have, will not bear an increase. To institute a rent freeze when the market will not bear increase rents anyways, you're effectively only hurting those landlords who are already renting their apartments below market and who are forced to be under the rent-controlled laws. Any landlord who owns a building that was built after 1978 is not affected by this. It's mainly small mom-and-pops like me who are ultimately, will ultimately be hurt. I look back on myself and I think that I was a fool for investing anything into this building because when rents go up, I won't be able to raise them even though I have beautiful units and I take really good care of my building. I believe that it's hypocritical to freeze only rent-controlled apartments while the city raises DWP rates by 4.8% and is, and is in the-
Hey!
Last, last thing, and is in the process of tripling metered parking rents rates from $2 to $6 throughout the city. And it's only us that's, that's being asked to put rent controls, put controls on our, on our income.
Thank you, Mr. Bick. Barbara?
Ah, yes. Good morning. My name is Barbara Schultz. I'm attorney with Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles and I'm just in from the wilds of the overflow rooms. I support this moratorium. Basically, there's a negative CPA and it makes absolutely no sense to have any kind of increase. I was in the city archives yesterday trying to figure out the justification for these policies and pretty much that 3% floor was made up of, from thin air or political expediency. But I wanted to turn your attention for a minute and focus on the extra percentage utility increases. This is something that no other jurisdiction does. And there's two very important sentences in the study. One, the continuous authorization of the additional 1% rent increase is not based on any evidence that these amounts have been adequate or reasonable. And two, there is no connection between the annual master metered increase authorized by the RSO and the actual cost increases. In other words, there is no rational basis for this policy, especially considering that the CPI includes utilities. The poorest tenants who compromise most of those living in master-metered buildings are basically being charged twice. We need a policy that rationally connects any exceptional costs or any floor to, to reality. Otherwise, it's arbitrary and capricious and I, this should be eliminated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Yolanda Gonzalez and I'm a property owner in Boyle Heights and in Venice. I have been an exceptional landlord and we have helped our tenants through the years of 25 get homes, help them with the rent. Right now, I happen to have six tenants out of work who have been my tenants, good-paying tenants for over 20 years. And I'm compromising because I'm not going to kick out good tenants with children and also pets. Yesterday, I was declined a loan because I need to foresee what's going to happen in the next year and two years because in Boyle Heights, I'm in a high-risk area and even though I have equity, they will not lend me because I am at risk. This is a financial suicide for the city and for any property owner. I went to the tax assessor yesterday because I'm going to reduce my taxes and that is going to be a loss for the county and for everybody. And this is what's happening. You better think about this.
Finish your statement.
Yes. Right now, this will be a financial suicide. It's not the $13, it's not the $14, but people will not be lending, the loners are not going to lend, and my insurance policy just went up another $1,500. That's all I want to tell you.
Thank you. How many units do you own?
I have a 14-unit apartment building in Boyle Heights and I have four units. And let me tell you something, my tenants would have been here, but they couldn't.
I understand. Okay, thank you. Do we have Scott Wright? Scott Wright?
I'm a small property owner. My wife and I worked very hard to, to purchase this building. We're blue-collar people and this was meant for our retirement. And we, we own a small building in a rent-controlled area and a small building in a non-rent-controlled area. And the difference in what I'm, it's so frustrating with this rent control. We're not out to rip off anybody. We love our tenants. We want, we need customers. They're our customers and we, like any other business, we need to treat our customers right. And I'm much, I'm much more able to keep up with maintenance issues and stuff like that in my non-rent-controlled building, even though rents are pretty, pretty similar. And I'd just like to read a quotation from the Nobel-winning economist, Paul Krugman in the New York Times. And a quotation he has, he has said, it says, "The great sacred cow, rent control, is a textbook example of economic stupidity." And, and the reason for this is because it creates shortages and anytime it decreases the quality of housing and violates the rights, competency, and the right to charge prices. This is the only business that, that, that our prices are being manipulated like this. In the 70s, when we had gas control, when we had gas prices-
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
-it created shortages and the same thing is happening with-
Thank you.
-with, within this.
Okay, that concludes our public comment. So I'd like to ask the department people to come forward and as they're doing that, to say, those of you that are here, that are on, you know, different sides, you have to admit one thing, that this is a very vaccine issue. For a lot of the, the, I mean, the tenants need the landlords and the landlords need the tenants. It is a very tough financial time for everyone and I got a feeling that Carlos's mom is not independently wealthy and that she doesn't do yoga in the morning and things. So you have some, a lot of us are the same. We have a lot that, that, that's in common. So I recognize that there are issues on both sides. What this tells me, members of this committee, that there's a lot of work that needs to be done on this issue to try to find some middle ground that makes some sense. So with that, Mr. Alarcon, I'm going to ask the, unless you have a different way you want to, to do this, ask the department people to give us their take and then we'll discuss this and see what we come up with.
Good morning. Roberto Aldapi, on behalf of the Housing Department, actually, council, council member, that was actually my opening line. We firmly subscribe to the fact that landlords need tenants in this city and tenants need landlords. It's a win-win for everybody. We want the folks in this room and the adjoining rooms to know that that's the Housing Department's position. I think we begin by starting off with a clarification on this motion that's set forward by Councilmember Alarcon and second by Councilmember Weezer and Rosendamn. And that is in respect to the free, the reference to freezes rents at the current level for one-year period. It is our understanding that that portion refers only to the annual rent increases and does not affect increases as it relates to capital improvement, apartment renovation work, just in reasonable applications, additional tenants, and any pass-through of the 1% each for- for gas, electricity. I believe the motion speaks to just the annual rent increases. All the other increases afforded under the ordinance would remain in effect. Thank you. Um, having said that, the Housing Department fully supports the review process of the HCD and are, are in the process of analyzing the testimony of the tenant advocates, the landlord panel that was here a couple of weeks ago with the property owners, with respect to the recommendations that's set forth in the Economic Roundtable Study Report. Moreover, we support any and all council actions with respect to this rent study and will expedite in the implementation of any actions as instructed by council. We have, uh, members of the rent study team present from the staff, as well as the representative from the Economic Roundtable who presented the study, uh, to answer any questions that the, uh, members of this committee may have.
Okay. Uh, before, and I'm sure everybody has a, a set of questions or wants to make a statement, but before I turn it over to you, Mr. Alacon, because this is your action initiated, uh, this, I want to say that I don't believe, I believe that there are problems that adversely affect landlords and adversely affect tenants where it relates to this situation. And I think that it's this committee's responsibility to seriously look into a way of creating a balance in order to do that. Um, I'm just not in a position to support, right now, a moratorium for one year. But what I would think that I could support would be something that would be for, for two, six months, four months, where we would then, uh, set forth some timelines where we could review the things that we need to review so that we can make the proper, uh, this, the decision, uh, Mr. Alacon. I wanna be fair to the, um, uh, owners. I wanna be fair to the tenants. And I would say to the, the, the tenants that the action that I would suggest doesn't mean that, um, this, whatever you wanna call it, for four months would stay in place forever. It would be for four months and I'd say we'd give ourselves an extra two if there are other information that we need to get. And then at that point in time, I think we try to address a lot of the concerns, uh, before us. Uh, I, again, I know that there are a lot of people that own under 10 units and four units and, again, they are not driving fancy cars and wearing, um, you know, $2,000 dresses. I mean, I can assure you of that. But there are some that, that do take advantage and somehow we've gotta come up with a set of regulations that are fair. So, uh, Mr. Alacon, I'm open, and I can't speak for any of the other, uh, members, but I'm open for something that would be on a short term, that would afford us the opportunity to, uh, you know, vet this properly. And so at this point, that's, uh, where, where I would be. And I still have some questions about how does this affect, uh, uh, you know, mobile, mobile home parks? Um, is it possible to do an exemption for, um, uh, owners of four-unit structures? Um, it's my understanding that we've got, uh, recently, uh, at first we had a, um, uh, opinion from the City Attorney's Office that we couldn't, you know, people who make, uh, you know, a higher income, that you couldn't, you know, they, whatever you did for all, you had to do that for them as well. It is my under, understanding that the City Attorney's Office has changed that. So, I mean, there are a lot of things that, um, I'd like for you to quickly respond to and I think a lot of things that we have to work on, uh, for, you know, within the next few months. But if you would be open to something like that, then I think I could support that. I don't know if we would have the votes, but that would be some temporary, uh, stoppage or freeze that would go into effect, uh, July 1st.
First of all, Mr. Chair, let me, let me, uh, let me say, and I think, I think the audience would agree on this, and that is that, you know, I've served in office for 17 years and, and I don't think there's any other chair who has been more fair than, than you, uh, in terms of giving both the landlords and the tenants an opportunity to, uh, to express their, their desires and concerns. Um, and so I wanna thank you for having this conversation, uh, because, uh, these are trying times and there's no question that, um, that everybody is affected negatively by this, by this economy. Um, that includes the landlords. This discussion, for me, i- is not about, uh, accusing landlords of poor, uh, management. That's an issue that came along with rent control. And, uh, I'm also of the opinion that, that the vast majority of landlords are, are doing a good job and, uh, trying to maintain their buildings. It makes sense. It's not good business to, to allow your asset to deteriorate and so you wanna take care of your property. Um, I'm also thinking that, uh, as a state senator, I introduced, uh, the measure that, um, had the effect of increasing the unemployment benefit, uh, up to, uh, for higher wage earners, uh, over $500 a paid period. Um, and so I'm also aware that the city of Los Angeles has almost a 13% unemployment rate and amongst renters, it's probably double or more. Um, the extended unemployment benefit from the federal government has, has, uh, reached its limit. Um, in fact, the unemployment benefit that was provided, uh, the doubling of the unemployment benefit that came through, uh, a bill that I wrote and was signed by Governor Davis, um, was what I believe enabled many of the renters to stay in their buildings because they were getting higher unemployment benefits. But you're gonna see a lot of downward movement in that regard because a lot of renters aren't gonna have that unemployment benefit anymore. The rate of long-term unemployment has increased and increases monthly. It's gonna be a while before we turn this economy around. So those people and those landlords are gonna start seeing their long-term unemployed tenants start not being able to make the rent and they're, they're gonna have to leave their apartments. Um, bottom line is this, while everybody is struggling with a horrible economy, the worst in my lifetime and probably yours as well, the question is, as a policymaker, do I want to allow a group to increase its, its income when the people that they are providing apartments to are losing income? And for me, I, I have to say, I, I can't be a party to that. I cannot align myself with allowing people to benefit when tens of thousands are struggling in Los Angeles. Mostly, the renters are struggling more than others. I, um, I don't, uh, find any pleasure in, in doing this. Um, I particularly don't enjoy hearing so many people talk about how difficult these times are on both sides. And I wish that, that we could find a perfect balance, but I can only judge, as a policymaker, what I believe to be that balance. And I believe that, as a city council member, I have a responsibility to protect the vast majority of people who are suffering more than others, the renters of Los Angeles. So let me just say a couple of things. Number one, on the, uh, mobile home park issue, I have the vast majority of, of, well, I have the bulk of, of mobile home parks in my district. It's an issue that, that, uh, I, I, uh, have been dealing with for 17 years and, and would be happy to meet with the mobile home park owners to, to discuss what their, their legal concerns are. Uh, but frankly, I believe it's more, uh, aligned with the 10% cap on, uh, on, uh, once a vacancy occurs and they, they can impose only a 10% cap, unlike the other apartment owners. That is what I understand the court challenge to be, not the 3% uh, uh, floor or the 8% cap on, on the rent control. Um, but, but I'm, but I believe that we need time to further dig into that issue to find out where, where the, where the truth lies. Um, I think that the council, as a whole, struggles just as I struggle. Uh, and, uh, and, and it's, is as difficult for them to make this decision as it is for any one of us as individuals. And so, but I also recognize that time is of the essence. July 1st is coming quickly, uh, and that, um, we haven't had as much time as I would have liked to be able to deliberate on this issue. Um, and I apologize for, for, uh, bringing this so late in the year. Nevertheless, I just couldn't, uh, hold out any longer, uh, and, and introduced it as an annual, uh, one-year, uh, moratorium. So with all of that, uh, I believe that, that, uh, that your, your idea to, uh, have a four-month moratorium, uh, with a possible two-month extension would give us the time to dig a little deeper, to understand the, the effects, uh, a little better, to certainly view the ramifications of, of, uh, the four months and, uh, and hopefully come out with, with the best balance that we can come up with. I believe that at the end of the day, we will demonstrate that an annual moratorium is, um, is, is, is what is necessary, but I also believe that, uh, when you look at the CPI, and, and let me ask the Housing Department very quickly, is there any other city that, that, uh, that, uh, has a floor, uh, that isn't tied to some economic index?
And Ortega, Housing Department. No councilman there is not.
So we're the only city that does not tie, do, do all the cities use the CPI?
Yes. The cities use the CPI. Uh, some of them use a percentage of the CPI, such as 75%. The city of LA uses 100%.
Okay, and that's only for the three to 8% range?
Well, the other cities don't have a range. They just use the-
The CPI?
The actual CPI.
Or, or a percentage of the CPI, so it's even less?
Yeah.
Um, and I, so I wanna say that, that, uh, I think the city has been very forgiving to the landlords on this issue compared to all other cities that, that have rent control. And, um, and while they are experiencing tough economic times, uh, I believe, uh, the renters are, are doing worse. But I will, I will, uh, I, I would, uh, accept, uh, your, uh, your support for, uh, a four-month moratorium with, uh, possible two-month extension should we need it, um, as a, as a sort of middle ground until we can get to, to more information.
Good. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, there is no easy answer here and I believe, uh, allowing the, uh, four months and potentially two more if needed, uh, would be, uh, a healthy way to go because it doesn't take the whole year. It gives us some breathing room to analyze and break down the, the data. Um, I've looked at statistics, I believe over 65% of the city are essentially within the rental group, uh, maybe even higher than that, a little bit higher than that. In my district, I'm probably closer to 70, 75% of folks that are, live in my district are renters. And it's probably true for four to five districts. Um, I mean, the issues of need are, are, are great. I mean, I know the Chair remains, Rob, and he makes reference to the yoga and everything else, but I also know that there are thousands and thousands of people out there in the working class who just don't have a voice. And, um, therein lies the struggle with those landlords who are trying to be good landlords and trying to survive in this economy that is, um, essentially hurting everyone. But given the dynamics we have today and, and given the issues that are in front of us, uh, I would go along with the four months plus two and essentially hoping that the city can come and the stakeholders, along with the Chair and his office, uh, work to a place where we can meet our expectations. Um, and hopefully the trends in our economy will change for the positive. So far, revenue base is going up. I mean, within the city, our indicators are in the positive and that creates a different sense of, uh, of hope, if you will, and how we can put this together. And so I would go along with the, uh, four months plus two, uh, if needed. And it gives us a, a point in time in which we can have more discussion, uh, given the, the laid-out we are, we are in, given this, this year, uh, fiscal challenges, so I would support that.
Ms. Perry?
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I have a few questions for the Housing Department. Uh, first of all, I'd like to know if you can make clear distinction between covenanted affordable housing units and units covered under the rent stabilization ordinance?
Uh, good morning, Ms. Perry. Haka Mordzai, Housing Department. The primary distinction between RSO units and covened, covenanted affordable housing projects is that occupancy in the covenanted units is restricted to low-income residents and the rents are set based on their income. And these restrictions are for 30 to 55 years, depending on the funding source and the covenant. In RSO properties, the annual increases are limited to the 3% to 8% based on the CPI, but these rents are reset to market whenever the tenant moves out. And what the, one of the findings of the rent study is that the reset on average takes place every five years.
Um, explain to us what you'll do if a rent freeze is implemented? And how many property owners will be affected?
Uh, under the, the-
Could you pull your mic a little closer, please?
And how many, how many, basically, how many people have received notification of the allowable rent increase so far, to date?
Uh, thus far, we've mailed notification, um, with the annual registration certificates that owners receive. Um, that's about 73,000 owners that have received, or are receiving those notices.
So, uh, now if the rent freeze is enacted, does the department have any idea how many tenants it will impact?
Well, there are, uh, 630,000 rental units, so all of the tenants in those units.
Now, what happens if a tenant has a three-year lease that includes a rent increase?
The rent increase would be still governed by the rent control ordinance, um, and, and that's regardless of whether it's a month-to-month or it's an annual lease, the-
Whether you have a lease or you're on month-to-month, the outcome is the same?
Yeah, in, essentially, in terms of your question, the way that I understand it, Councilmember Perry, because if you have a one-year lease, for example, at the end of the lease, you cannot then turn around and have a new lease for greater than the RSO amount. Similarly, if you have a month-to-month, at the end of 12 months, you can also only increase the rent based on the RSO amount.
So what's the process for moving forward, uh, to complete a comprehensive RSO review? And also, has the working group of tenants and property owners been convened?
Well, the, the process is, as we know, understand it, is within this committee. It's currently undergoing the, the review of the RSO. It's my understanding, having the Economic Roundtable present their recommendations, the tenant advocates presenting their recommendations, and the landlord panel recommendations, we seek, uh, instructions from this committee to proceed how we, in order to proceed forward.
What's the timeline on that? You don't have a timeline?
No, the timeline would be, we'd like to get it done within four months.
Okay, um-
But just, just as, as an addendum to your, your question in regards to the, what outreach we've done to landlords so far, as is our practice, we notify landlords at the beginning of, the beginning of this year what the annual rent increase will be based on the CPI. Uh, it's posted on our website and we send it out, um, generally, we would send it out on our, our annual bill. We did not do that this year because we wanted to see what this committee was, what the recommendations were gonna come out of, uh, this committee as well as council. Uh, but as Ms. Ortega said, we also sent out the first batch of registration statements to property owners with the second batch being sent out, um, within a couple of weeks that would, that notified property owners that the rent increase for beginning July 1st would be 3%.
And one additional point, if I may add- And one additional point, if I may add, Councilmember Perry, is that during the rent study itself, the rent study consultants, they did extensive, um, outreach survey meetings with both tenants and landlords on the various issues that they made findings on, and also there was the oversight committee that comprised, was comprised of both landlords and tenants, which reviewed the findings, um, that were made by the rent study. That was also part of the process.
Um, you have something else? Okay, great. So since the Economic Roundtable study was in, uh, was released in 2009 in November, uh, the city's been working in good faith with property owners and with tenants, uh, to do this, uh, comprehensive review. And I know that there's been a lot of frustration over the length of time it has taken and that changes have not yet been implemented. Uh, I, I differ from my colleagues because I don't believe a freeze will help us, uh, enhance, uh, the goal of either the tenants or of the property owners. Uh, I think it polarizes the situation even more, and I would prefer to put more pressure on the process to move it, uh, more quickly. Um, I think that, uh, putting a freeze creates false expectations to tenants and then causes property owners more difficulties, and I have an interesting district in the standpoint that I have an enormous amount of permanent supportive housing, uh, transitional housing, I have the largest emergency housing shelter for people who are homeless in the city, uh, and I have great new mixed-income projects south of Washington Boulevard, on Central Avenue, on Vermont, on Broadway, and on Figueroa, and will continue to do that, as well as mixed-income, mixed-use projects all over downtown Los Angeles for any, uh, developer who accepted public money. Uh, so that, that's my opinion, that I, I feel that four months a year, uh, it's kind of a wash either way because it creates, uh, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, that, uh, creates false expectations. Um, and I would say, and I know that Mr. Reyes and I have talked about this for years, you know, build more affordable housing. Don't hesitate to build affordable housing. Not everybody in this city builds affordable housing, uh, in their districts. I've talked to a number of housing advocacy organizations, and, you know, we go every year, make the pledge, and I, I remember one year, I was at, uh, a session, you know, and I, and I, and I finally said, uh, I'm not sure why I'm signing this pledge, I've not only pledged, but I've exceeded the pledge. Uh, but I, I think, and I'm, I'm wondering why you don't pursue people who mouth the words but don't produce the units, um, because the more units you put on the market, the more it evens out, uh, the playing field on affordability. Uh, so that is my position, and, uh, I look forward to taking this to council.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Perry. You know, I don't think that it, there's, uh, I don't think there's, uh, such thing as a wrong opinion on this. I mean, it's, this is, like I said when we began, a very difficult, uh, vaccine, uh, issue, and I respect, um, everyone's opinion. Uh, how does this affect mobile home parks?
We'd like to defer that question to the city attorney.
Okay. Yes. Please come up. As the kids say, "Don't be scarred, just come on, sit down and answer, answer the question." Yes?
Good morning. Um, our office is aware of the two cases, uh, previously cited, um, the San Rafael and Goleida case, but we were, we were just made aware of this late, late last, well, late, yesterday afternoon, so we haven't had the opportunity to fully brief the cases. We are meeting with Councilman Alarcon's office directly after this session, and we'll get fully briefed on the matter, and we'll, we'll conduct a full analysis.
Okay, so you'll be prepared to-
Yeah.
-answer the question when you come before the council?
Yes.
That's fair enough.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You have a question?
We're, okay.
We're, we're not the legal experts on this, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking into these cases as well, uh, we're, we're gonna look for the city attorney's guidance.
Okay. All right, Mr. Reyes has a, a question.
Councilperson Perry brings up a very important point, and, uh, may the housing department can help us out here. What are the next step, steps given the Economic Roundtable discussion? Like, what's the threshold? What, where's the calendar for this? Who's moving it? How, how are we getting to the next level of fruition in that policy discussion? Who's guiding that?
Well, having the, um, the, the difference, various groups come up and provide their input into this, there, we believe that the next step would be for the housing department to come up, uh, with their, with their recommendations as based on the transmitter that we released back, uh, in June.
So last June? So it's almost a year since that report came out?
I believe so.
So we've waited nine months? Almost nine months? So what's holding us back? I mean, is it just, I know, it's not like we're doing nothing here, I mean, I, I know how busy you are, believe me, with budget cuts and everything else. But what's it, what's it gonna take to get it to the next point?
I think this, if I can jump in, uh, that, that, as a committee, as chair of the committee, that I'm gonna have to push this, that I'm gonna have to make this a priority. Uh, we already have some meetings, uh, set up, so I want to be able to present to this committee and eventually the full council, uh, the, the results of all of the talks and discussions that we have. That's why I'm gonna do everything that I can to make sure that this takes place within the four-month, uh, period.
If I may, sir, I also wanna, as chair of Planning Land Use and Management, this housing issue has a very direct effect on how land use patterns are emerging in the city, how we're gonna alter them, so to the extent that it applies to our planning police powers in the city, that is what I'd like to bring to my committee as well, so that we can understand-
Well, you know-
...those implications, and I go into, uh-
No, I've, uh, have always en- enjoyed when you and I, uh, collaborate. I just didn't want to, uh, give you extra work, but since you volunteered, I could use your guidance, and I think that, uh, the expertise of, uh, the, the committee staff that you have put together with ours, that hopefully we can come up with something, so thank you.
No, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
No, we have, both have a sense of, that sense of urgency, so thank you.
The housing department is fully available to this committee to-
Oh, no, we're gonna-
-to engage and expedite any, this process forward.
Definitely, uh, you will be, uh, included. Uh, if there are no more questions or concerns, what I would, uh, suggest is that we, uh, do a, a roll call vote on, uh, uh, Mr. Alarcon's motion as amended. Do you want to read the amendment into the record, or do we just give it to the city clerk, or how do we do that?
Okay, I've been asked to read it. I, uh, replace the fourth paragraph with the following: "I therefore move the city council instruct the city attorney, in conjunction with the Los Angeles Housing Department, to prepare and present an ordinance within two weeks that suspends the 3% floor, July 1st, 2010 rental increase currently allowed by the city's rent stabilization ordinance pursuant to LAMC Sections 151.06D and 151.07A6 until October 31st, 2010, and include the possibility to extend the 3% floor suspension for two additional months through December 31st, 2010 by adoption of council resolution. The ordinance should also include an urgency clause if needed for the ordinance to become effective prior to July 1st, 2010."
Okay, thank you, caller roll. Who calls the roll? We don't do that.
He does. He can do it.
Were you sleeping?
I was writing, sir.
Oh, okay.
In his sleep.
Yeah.
In his sleep, he was writing. Go on, Alan.
Here you go. Councilmember Wesson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes?
Yes.
Councilmember Perry?
No.
Councilmember Cardenas is absent, and Councilmember Alarcon?
Yes.
Yes. He, he's reflected as a yes.
So the motion will go to council with, uh- You see? Wait, wait, wait. This is one of the things that Ms. Perry was referring to as false expectation, so this is four months, and we gotta, we have to work on this to try to come up with something that's balanced. And what you need to hope is that there are more people on the council that aren't concerned about the, these unexpected, or expectations, or so. Anyway, with that, is there any more business before this committee?
No, there's-
This committee is adjourned.
Yes, sir. Correct.
Certainly. Like that?
Sure.
Well, it's in council on- It's in council on Friday, so I don't know whether they'll open or reopen or not. Can you take, no, no? Can you, can you give this to the lady, the translator? She's collecting all the devices, and they were from this room.